All right, good morning. It's Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. We started at nine with a new employee orientation that was not livestreamed. We're picking up here at 10:07 a.m. with item two on the morning's work session agenda, which is internal rates review. I'm joined by all the commissioners, other than Commissioner Edwards, who's excused, the county manager and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder and various folks from our leadership team. So I'm going to turn things over to you all.
Yes, I'll kick it off. So today is the last day that I will be leading the presentation on internal service rates for Thurston County. It's been a long 14 years. This is about the 14th time I'll do this, and I am happy to be turning it over to others. But I'm also extremely proud of the central service support teams, not just central services, but also IT, HR, and financial services, and the work we do to support the county. And I would also mention that Summer Miller, who will be taking over budget, would be with us this morning, but she is working on the EPM. So we are dividing and conquering this morning. So moving into the presentation. We're here to start with internal services and information technology rates. Please go to the next slide. So we'll be sharing with you what those rates were today, not only for central services and IT, but also for HR and for financial services. We are asking the Board of Accounting Commissioners to approve the internal service rates. We will share with you that county offices and departments need these final rates to be entered into the budget system so that they can prepare their budgets for next year, which is why timing was very important. And then we'll share with you the overall impact of proposed rates. You get a bit of a taste right there. IT is going up 14%, and Sheri will be telling you about that. Central Services has a 0.1% increase, so it's pretty flat, but the distribution amongst offices and departments is changing. Just as background, as you've heard me say many times before, Internal Services supports every office and department across the county. So when you think about programs and activities and the services that our county provides to the citizens of the county, they could not do that without the support of our internal service providers. So we provide things like building maintenance and utilities. You come in the morning and you take for granted that the lights are going to be on and the building's going to be warm, and that's because Central Services pays those bills and allocates the cost to every office and department. You take for granted that your phone's going to work. That's because IT, phone people are there to support that, ensure that you've got phone service, and we pay the bills to make sure your phone will turn on and work for you. And then we distribute those costs to every office and department. And you'll hear from HR, we do risk management, we administer benefits. Financial Services does the cost plan. Financial Services provides accounting support to every office and department, and then they also allocate the costs for the prosecutor's civil office and HR payroll team and all the other internal services that create a backbone, if you will, for all the services that the county provides. There are three different types of internal service funds that you'll hear about. One type is maintenance and operations funds. Those are the day-to-day services, janitorial, utilities, computer support. There are the reserve funds. These are basically our savings accounts. They're where we deposit money every month so that when we need to replace a car or a computer or work on a building, the money is there for us to do that. And then the third type of account are risk funds or insurance-type funds. So these are unemployment insurance, the risk pool. These are funds where we have money set aside as insurance in case something happens. So those are the three kinds of funds you'll hear about. They're managed in slightly different ways, but all of them are based on rates that are paid by every office and department out of every fund in the county. So how are the rates developed? Each of the providers are going to talk a little bit more about this, but at a very high level, you've heard me say this many times, state law requires that we have a fair and equitable allocation of costs. So each type of cost is allocated on a basis that's related to the type of service it provides. We allocate janitorial and utility based on square footage occupied in our buildings. We allocate the cost of computers based on the number of computers that each office has. So you'll hear about these allocation methods, and they're a little different depending on the type of service. That follows best practices that are laid out on a national accounting basis. There's best practices for how one allocates internal services. And also, the Washington State Auditor has published guidance and actually did an audit on which the BARS manual refers and relies on how we should allocate our internal service costs. So we follow best practices and requirements by the state of Washington. All cost allocation is done through internal service rates. You'll hear more about that. It's what the morning's all about. And then there's two methods to do this. One is a prospective method where the office estimates what their costs are going to be next year, allocates that estimated amount, and then at the end of the year, you have to do a reconciliation because, according to state laws, internal services cannot collect more than they actually spend, so they have to true it up at the end of the year. The other method is a retrospective basis where costs are allocated on a two-year lag. Those are actual costs. That's how we do ERNR and the cost plan, but the rest of our services are prospectively allocated. And then, as you can see from the graphic, we divide the rates up to customers. We set up a payment plan, if you will, and we review those on a regular basis. The state rules say that we should review and update our internal service rates every year, which is why, even though this is a midterm adjustment, we've done a full review of the internal rates for each of these areas, and we're coming to you for your approval at this point in time. So that's the background and basis, and I'd be happy to answer any general questions. And if you have none, we'll turn it over to the teams.
Can you remind me, when you say cost plan, what does that encompass?
I'm going to let Darren talk more about the cost plan when the time comes.
Okay. Any other questions up front? Okay.
All right. Okay, so I guess I get to kick it off with the biggest increase, I think, this year. Our adopted rates for 2025 were 16.2 million, and due to increases in costs and unanticipated additional costs that we could not include in our 2025 rates that we can talk about more, now we're proposing an $18.8 million total cost. The change is $2.5 million and a total of 14%. The way that is allocated for the general fund, the total cost is $11 million, which is 60%. Non-general Fund is $7 million, and then we support some non-county agencies, and that's 1% of the total rate. We'll get a little bit more into details. So when we talk about maintenance and operations, that's our Fund 5250. That's where we see the largest increase, and that is for... We split our 5250 into three different categories. We have basic IT, GIS, and telecom. And our biggest increase has to do with the maintenance in our IT fund. With the addition of Axon and 365 Labs, that increased, not just those two, but those had the biggest impact on the increase in our maintenance. 365 Labs is the sheriff's new jail management/records management system, which was approved a couple of years ago, but we didn't put it in the rates because we weren't sure of the timing. If you recall, that's part of that consortium. So we're working with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, Yelm, Tenino, I think, to implement a regional jail management and records management system. So we did not put those in our proposed rates last year because we weren't sure when that was actually going to take place. They've done the RFP a couple of times, and then they hired a contracting company to come in and help evaluate the responses and choose the best solution, and it's called 365 Labs. That project is set to kick off on November 1st, so we now need to put it in our rates to make the payments, the maintenance payments, for next year. So that's $765,000 cost just for that one. And then Axon, which you guys have talked a lot about, this is just the Public Defense and Prosecuting Treaties version of Axon. It helped with that increase as well. And then that reconciliation that Robin talked to, we did not collect enough last year to cover what we spent, and most of that was due to inflation. And so the reconciliation is $713,000. This is making up for what we spent last year that we didn't collect. So that's the biggest impact to our rates. GIS actually is getting a rebate this year of $212,000. We collected $212,000 more in 2023 than we spent. Telecom is a rebate of $54,000, but the price still increased by 10% because of an increase in our maintenance costs of our telephone systems. Do you have questions about that before we move on? I just have questions in general, so I can wait until... Okay. So the next one is our IT reserve. That actually increased by 22%. This also has to do... This is where we collect money to replace our infrastructure and computers, and that one also is due to an increase in costs, 22% increase overall, anticipating that replacement of our equipment is going to be a lot more expensive than initially anticipated. And then the final one, the large system replacement, actually we have a 2.2% decrease, and that is probably just a temporary decrease because when we start accounting for all the rest of the systems that we now need to add to our application replacement, that will probably start going up. But for this year, it's a 2.2% decrease. So that's all of IT rates.
Thank you. Quite an increase.
Yes, it is.
So my first question's in regards to you as we're doing even more system upgrades. I know that there's a queue for that. You know, is this going to be like, are we going to keep seeing this amount of increases on a yearly basis? Is this something that the board really needs to talk about?
Yeah, I could jump in here, Commissioner. You made a request, I think it was about a week and a half ago, and Sheri's working on it, to have a conversation about where IT's at with a number of its projects. And so what Sheri has done is put together an overview of everything that's in the hopper, things that are on the flight deck, as she said, things that are going to be taken off here shortly. And it's important for us to get that overview to use so that we can talk about what the full costs of implementations, similar to what we experienced with TC Connect and the need for support. Sheri and I have been having conversations about the need to really sit down and map that out up front with the departments and possibly set some guidance to departments around that because what I'm learning is, and this is not unique to this organization, we're in a technology, innovation, culture, and environment, so it's not unusual for departments to identify solutions to their business needs, start working on those solutions, and then, in the best case, they're informing Sheri when they're coming up with the ideas. In the worst case, they have a bender in tow, and they're already making progress down the road, and now they're telling Sheri, or Sheri finds out, and now she's having to jump in. And so we're at that tension where we don't want to slow down innovation and automation of work, but we have to stop enough to understand what's the full cost. And so we don't want to put Sheri in a place where she's saying no because then people will be frustrated with her as an internal service department. At the same time, we can't say yes until it's fully understood, the scope, because as rates go up, if our revenue doesn't keep up, then what happens is it's creating pressure on an already strained budget for all departments. So we'll bring that information to you, possibly in the next couple of weeks, to go through that in detail. We're just trying to make sure we have everything that we need to have that discussion in a board briefing.
So when are we going to see the impact of this? Is it going to be this year during budget amendment, or is it going to be...
I think it depends. If... Almost everything that has been approved thus far is incorporated in this year's rates. So if it's been approved by the board to move forward, then I have included it. So as things are approved, then I can't include it until that happens. So everything that has been already accounted for is in this year's rates.
The only item that's not is the contract that the board just approved for ongoing support of Oracle.
That's true.
So we'll build that into the numbers and so that they're effective in 2025.
Can you... Maybe this was Commissioner Meehan's question, but can you describe how these adjustments play into... Like, are we going to have a midterm adjustment that's going to have to incorporate this information we're getting?
That's exactly what we're doing, is these become part of the midterm adjustment for the budget that's effective in 2025.
So this is, since we're covering the costs, this will be a budget increase?
That's right.
Yeah, so operational increases.
Maintenance of level?
Yeah.
Effort increase throughout?
Yep.
How much of an impact is this to the general fund and then our two other funds? Is that in the first page? It'll be 2 million?
Yeah, I think 2 million is to the general fund.
And there are customer allocations.
An increase of 20%. For operations and maintenance, it's 1.7 million, a 20% increase.
Do we have an upcoming... Like, usually there would be periodic budget updates about the economy and revenues, and we haven't had one in a while. And I was at another meeting where we were getting one from the state, and it said REIT's coming in really strong at the state level, that, you know, we hadn't seen that in our last... So I just... Is it about time that the board kind of gets a revenue review?
Yeah, I'll answer that question. I think the absence of having TC Connect implementation and then us having change of personnel, we'd probably have had one about a month ago. So Robin is working with Summer and our budget team, and as then, we also develop a tighter approach with the auditors team. Our desire would be to bring that in quarterly and to be updating you on forecasts. There's a number of things Robin has showed me that she has used as tools in the past that we will be brushing off and fine-tuning to bring to the commissioners, because I think that helps you make decisions when you have that context, and then we talk budget.
So we will have an update when we bring you the preliminary budget in September. There will be a full update at that.
Okay. Back to Sheri. Is that your piece?
That's my piece.
So we go to the next piece, which is...
Good morning. Bruce Garba, Acting Central Services Director. I'll provide a brief overview of central services rates and then turn it over to the division managers to discuss the individual funds. Central Services manages four funds, two operating, two reserve. In total, the proposed 25 rate is 25.4 million, which represents less than a 1% increase from the adopted 25 rates. The breakdown of the allocation is 53% to the general fund, 44% to non-general fund, and 2% to non-county agencies. 5210 covers the maintenance and operations for both facilities and administrative services. It's a prospective rate developed for next year's anticipated costs. In total, it had a decrease of less than 1% from adopted to proposed. I'll be followed by Jettie, who will cover the cost centers within 5210 that support administrative services.
Good morning. I'm Jettie Silwachinowski, Administrative Services Manager for Central Services. I oversee the postal, records, and countywide services budgets within Fund 5210. The postal rate allocation is based on three items. It's the mail operations, delivery, and postage. The records rate allocation is based on the amount of Laserfish storage and the number of boxes stored at the record center as of the inventory date. And then the countywide services include positions within central services that provide various countywide services, and that rate allocation is based on percentage of budget. And with that, I'll be followed by Facility Services Manager.
Good morning. I'm Jason Ash, Facility Services Manager. One of the funds I oversee, as Bruce said, is 5210. Besides what Jettie spoke of, 5210 also includes M&amp;O for facilities, utilities, and custodial. M&amp;O and custodial are split out based upon the square footage each tenant has in the building. Utilities are based upon the square footage also, but I take the prior year actuals plus the estimated increases provided to me by the utilities, and that's our proposed rates for the utilities. As Jettie mentioned earlier... As Jettie mentioned earlier, and Bruce, there's a decrease of 0.7% overall in that fund. The other fund I oversee is 5220. This fund, as Robin spoke about, is the savings accounts for the buildings for infrastructure repairs or replacement. This fund is also allocated out based upon square footage of the tenants occupying the building. You will see an overall decrease of 3.1% for this. This is due to the indirect cost being less than originally anticipated. I'll point out with that comment that the overall amount going into the savings accounts slash building reserves will be the same as the prior year. So I'll now turn it over to Bruce with Fleet.
Fleet manages two funds, one for operations, one for replacement. First one I'll go over is our operating fund, 5410. This fund pays for staff salaries, parts, fuel, and services to keep the county's vehicles and equipment in service. Unlike the funds previously covered, this one is developed on a retrospective rate. So what you're seeing is actually the cost changes from 2022 to 2023 because it's a two-year lag. The 25 proposed rate is $5.4 million, so 1.9% over adopted, 1.9% increase over adopted. Costs were generally flat, with small increases in parts, services, and staff salaries. Fuel costs were slightly down. The second fund is the reserve fund. The reserve fund collects the replacement cost for each piece of equipment in the county inventory to ensure that funds are available when a piece of equipment is up for replacement. Replacement years are set to minimize the total cost of ownership, and these replacement balances are reviewed with our customers annually to ensure that we're setting replacement years and replacement amounts appropriately to minimize that total cost of ownership. The proposed rate for 25 is 5.7 million, which is a 1.4% increase. Fleet carefully manages the reserve fund and, as I said, meets with the customers to minimize the cost of ownership and mitigate price increases that we've seen in capital costs.
Could we go back one slide, please? Back one, that one. So on the building reserves, I would just like to note, Jason said that there's no major change in the amount going into the building reserve. I just want to remind the board that these rates are not enough to cover what we need to maintain these buildings at this time. The rates have not been appropriately adjusted for a number of years. So, you know, we do not have the money in savings to replace roofs or HVACs or carpets. At this point, Jason's doing an analysis right now to say, what if we just did minimum maintenance? But Rick Thomas, who's not here with us today, is doing a long-term look at facility needs for the county. It's not ready now, may not be ready this year, but it's coming soon, and we've been working with Leonard on that. So right now, the rates you see are not what really needs to be going into this fund.
Thank you. I guess I'm gonna request for maybe a subcommittee meeting as we're talking about this. It would be important to know what is it that we really need to be at, right? Especially as we're talking about new options. What is going to be the actual impact in order to maintain those buildings? I don't think any of us want to invest in something new and then all of a sudden we just let it, you know, so where is it that we actually need to be at? And if we're to move, where do we need to be at?
Yeah, well, I think that's part of what Robin is tasked, her team, with putting together is where are we at with this rate? What does it get us? And where should we be based on the facility sizes that we need? You know, the short history is along the way for various reasons, what, this rate didn't keep tabs with the facilities we have to actually maintain them. So that's where we start seeing deferred maintenance compile. And if you've ever managed, as many of you have experience in your background, capital situations, when you don't maintain something, the problem doesn't go away, it just expounds upon itself. And, you know, a roof repair then can become a new roof, which then can become larger issues. And so we want to make sure that we're looking at this in its entirety so we can sit down with the board and talk about where are we at, where do we need to be at, and what's a bridge plan to get there. As soon as that information is prepared, we can bring that to a briefing.
Thank you. Then thank you very much to the Central Services and IT team, and we're gonna invite, who's next, HR?
Guys, break the piggy pinks.
Quiet because it's depressing, though, because you've done a great job. It's quiet in the room.
My name is Maria Ponte. I am the HR Director. With me today is Tara Wickline. She's the Compensation and Benefits Manager, and Brian Bishop, the Risk and Safety Manager. Today, we are here to present the HR rates for 2025 midterm adjustment. Just a quick introduction to Human Resources. We provide a variety of services across the county to offices and department. That includes payroll processing, benefits, employee relations, managing the workers' comp liability, workers' comp and liability, property, insurance, safety, just to name a few of the programs. We manage three internal service funds. That's benefits administration, leave buyout, and the insurance. So I think we have two bits of good news. So no increases to benefits or leave buyout, and there is a, I think, a modest risk increase to our insurance risk fund. And as you know, that insurance's coverage is quickly increasing, and we've seen much bigger increases in the past. So unless you have any questions for me, I will hand it over to Tara Wickline to talk a bit about benefits and leave buyout.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tara Wickline, Compensation and Benefits Manager. So the way that our rates are developed for benefits fund and leave buyout are a little different. For the benefits fund, we project out what it will cost to pay for the 2.7 FTEs that work and are paid for from this fund. We also project out what the administration fees that we've paid to some of our benefit vendors will cost. The leave buyout fund is a little different, and this is still a fairly new fund. This fund, we looked at the cash outs that we have been paying to employees that have retired from the county. We went back several years, I think we went back about 10 years, and looked at what the average cash out was. And our intent was to fund that fund so that we could pay for those cash outs and take some of that burden off of each office and department. With this being a new fund, we've kind of just let that rate settle, and I think our plan was to go through at least the end of this next biennium before relooking at that. So for 2025, we are not requesting any increase for benefits fund or the leave buyout. Benefits fund should be able to sustain itself through 2025, and the leave buyout, we know, is a very healthy fund right now. So at some point, we'll come before the board and maybe look at adjusting the payouts or the rate from that one. Any questions on benefits or leave buyout?
Can you remind me, like, a few years ago, we were trying to mitigate this impact and we were trying to, like, fund like 25% or something like that of the projected leave buyout? That's what this is?
Yes, that's what that is. Yeah, currently, we do 25% of any leave cash outs for employees that are retiring from the county.
How has it been working, right? I remember this was a big thing when I came on the board and we did this just in order to assist the offices and departments to help plan better as employees were retiring. How has it been, has it been working? Has it been a success or not really as we're three, four years into it?
So it's interesting because what we've seen since this fund has been created is more and more offices and departments are allowing retiring employees to essentially run out some leave, and so they'll be gone for the last two months before they officially retire. So what we expected to pay out, we're not paying out anywhere near what we expected to pay out of this fund because the cash outs themselves just aren't there.
So next year, you could consider, because the fund is accruing a healthy fund balance, you could consider instead of 25%, 50% offset or bring the rate down. And we're just wanting to let it play out a few years to see where the trends really go. So that's fascinating, but I see that a lot, people burning their...
That's a question I had.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so that was the good news. As you, I know Commissioner Meehan's from me, yeah, you've seen the risk rates before. Robin, this is your last rate day presentation. This is my first rate day presentation, so I'm glad we get...
Welcome to the party, Brian.
Thank you. It's good to be here. How the rates are developed, the risk fund is divided basically into two main parts, the general liability and the property insurance. There's other insurances like bonds for elected officials and the cybersecurity insurance, which I'll talk about a little later because we have some rainbows and unicorns part there in the cybersecurity piece. It's for you, Commissioner Meehan. The risk from the general liability is based on 80% of FTEs base rate, and then there's the 20% is a surcharge, which is made up of 40% frequency and 60% severity. So what types of liability claims are you having in each department or office? They are assigned based on that 40-60 split. The property, we took out immunis this year because that's the data we had at the time of developing the rates. Next year, we'll be using TC Connect, but who is housing each property? We're not looking at square footage because we don't insure square footage. We insure total insured value. What are we gonna, what are the replacement costs for each building if something catastrophic were to happen? So that's how property is assigned. And that is based on an 80% base rate and 20% experience surcharge for the property. I will just hit right now that we are proposing a modest increase of 12.5%. Being in my first rate day presentation, I hope I'm not aiming too low. I'm gonna have to come back next year. Picking insurance or trying to tell you what our insurance rates are going to be next year is pretty tough. There's so many variables. There's what insurance companies are going to be in Washington. We've already had one pull out when the board asked us to look at a self-insurance model. We thought we were going to get a quote from Liberty Insurance and Liberty Mutual. Liberty Mutual pulled out one, and they said the nuclear jury verdicts, the legislation of liability and property that is here in our state. They said we can't insure in Washington anymore, so they pulled out. So we're looking at that landscape of insurance companies. We're looking at rising costs and liability claims, tort claims, nuclear verdicts from juries. You've probably seen those in the news. Those are affecting every county. Really, everyone in the nation is being affected by that. So we're trying to tell you or pinpoint budget, what will our insurance rates be next year? It's kind of like if you were gonna tell me what your car insurance rates are gonna be a year from now, you may not know. You might pick up a dependent, you might have a car wreck. It's just hard to decide what pinpoint that's down. So we look at history. History has, and we talked to our brokers and our insurers. For the general liability, two things have happened. We put in a 5% overall increase to the premiums just to be safe because we don't want to undershoot it and come back next year and ask for more. The other piece is that the risk pool was operating on a October to September premium year. The board, the risk pool board, Commissioner Fornier is on the board, voted to go to a January to December premium. So that means we have to pick up three extra months of premium, so that's about 25% increase right there. It's a good move. When I was talking about the insurers, they really have a hard time quoting us.
It was important, you have to hang in there for a second.
It was a really good move. The insurers base most of their insurance quotes, premiums across the nation for other pools on a calendar year. So it was really hard for them to come to us and say, well, here October, we don't know what we're doing with renewals for all the other pools and all the other insurers. So moving to January just made sense for a lot of reasons. We do have to pick up those three months, though. We encouraged them to vote yes, so it was a good thing. General liability, you'll see that increase of 864,700. That is really for those additional three months. Property liability, I probably hit this one pretty well because this year, we barely saw any increase to property insurance, where in past years, we've seen incredible double-digit increases in property insurances, if you remember. That was due to just the high inflation of repair costs, building costs, contractors were down. So we're kind of recovering from that COVID construction phase. So property insurance really was kind of flat this year. General liability was definitely the largest hit and will continue to be the largest hit as just claims continue to be on the rise for mostly severity. Our frequency is not on the rise, but severity definitely is. Other insurances, increase of zero. Cybersecurity, I would like to take two, three minutes, if you're okay, to get on a soapbox and just tell all of the Thurston County employees how great they're doing. And thank you to Sheri and her department for driving the Duo Mobile, the multi-factor authentication, MFA. Whenever you sign in and you have to push that Duo Mobile accept, that gives us the decrease on our cybersecurity premiums. And to Thurston County's credit and to all the counties in Washington's credit, we heard from the National Executive Director of Risk Pools, who said that every other state is seeing double-digit increases for the past two to three years in their cybersecurity premiums. We are not seeing anything in our pool, nor is Thurston County individually seeing an increase because we have not had any claims. And employees just think before they click. Our no before training, they send phishing emails to IT, all of this is just really paying off. So I want to just say congratulations to everybody. We should pat ourselves on the back whenever we can and reward ourselves when other insurances are going up, but cybersecurity, we should say good job. So there's my soapbox.
Comments, questions? I'm ready. Questions?
So that general liability increase, that 864, is that going to be an increase that we're gonna be seeing on a yearly basis now? That's gonna kind of be the new level that we have to be at? Or is that something that we had already budgeted for? What's the...
So, you know, we hadn't budgeted for just three months because we didn't know it's gonna happen just a few months ago when the board voted to go that way.
So this is something we're going to have to add to our budget, and then this is going to be on an ongoing basis? Or is this just a one-time?
It's a one-time because we're just capturing 15 months. We're normally, we're 12 months. The normal increase that we would have to look for each year, I think 12 and a half The, the normal increase that we would have to look for each year, I think twelve and a half percent increase in general liability premiums would be good if we could stay there. With the insurance market, with what we just heard from our brokers. I, I did just get put on the executive committee of the risk pool, so I'll have a little bit more information sooner than later. And being able to recommend to the boards what to do with rates. But the insurance market and the brokers is, is limiting the, we carry excess insurances above our self-insurance retention for the pool. So I don't want to get into a lot of insurance talk, but, so we insure our losses. But then we go for the higher losses and go get other excess insurance. Those carriers, our carrier from last year, in a nutshell, basically said, we're going to quote you this year, but it's going to be so high, you probably won't even want it. So they're basically saying, we had a hundred and forty percent loss ratio with your premiums. We collected a hundred thousand in premiums and we paid out a hundred and forty thousand in claims. Insurance companies just can't operate at that loss. So they pulled out, which means we're limiting, who can we go to to get insurance? So it's a, it's been a hard market for a number of years. It's not looking great for the next few years. Working on things we can do. Risk mitigation is, is number one, keeping our costs down. Education within our organization, two, training. But we still have the, the jury verdicts. We still have plaintiff attorneys who are getting wiser, smarter and just looking for more opportunities to get what they can out of the county.
Zero, zero and modest increase. Just emphasize that.
And cybersecurity zero, but that we should really should have.
Yeah, and cybersecurity zero. Thank you. Thank you, Robin, for all your leadership through all of these years. Thank you.
Auditor's office, financial services. We're going to find out what cost plan is.
That's right. Am I ready? Okay, so I'm, I guess I'm by myself today. I'm Darren Bennett, I'm the financial services manager. And financial services, of course, is in the auditor's office. I work for Mary Hall. I've been the financial services manager since two thousand and eight, sixteen, sixteen and a half years, so a little bit longer than Robin's been here. I've got three folks with me here today. They're all on the call, which is fantastic. The first one is Ron Haney, who I will turn the presentation over to in just a couple of minutes here because Ron is the detail guy for this. He has been, been doing the, the cost plan for the county for well over twenty years, I believe, dating back to the late nineteen nineties. And Ron knows, knows this information, he knows the numbers in and out. Also have Sharon Brown. Sharon assists Ron in putting the cost plan together every year. Sharon does a lot of the legwork to get information from, from all the departments, so she's here. And also Amber Young in, in financial services, while we are training Amber to, to learn, learn the cost plan. But before I turn it over to Ron, just, the cost plan is done by financial services. It's been done by financial services for many years and it's done on behalf of the county commissioners. And just at a real high level, the cost plan is pretty much the exact same as you heard from what other folks going on here. It's a recovery of costs. But in this case, the cost plan is, it's a recovery of costs for, it's for the general fund. So it represents revenue back to the general fund. And it's, it's a recovery of costs for costs that have been incurred by general fund departments as they provide services to other funds. Okay, so other, so the examples of services, payroll, accounts payable, grants management, putting together our financial statements, treasurer's office, general fund, HR's portion of the general fund, prosecuting attorneys, the civil division of prosecuting attorneys, planning, the assessor's office, commissioner's office. All of that is, is, is recovered from, from other funds. So I will turn it over to Ron and have him go through, go through the slides for you. Are you ready, Ron?
I'm ready. Get away.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good, good. Thank you, greetings and salutations. Yeah, yeah, so all the introductions have already been done. You know, one other person that's also been involved fairly deeply in the cost plan is your own Robin Campbell. So, so I'd like to, you know, she's quite an expert herself, so anyway, I'd just like to point that out. So in two thousand and twenty-five, that's what we're going to collect, eight, eight and a half million. And that's an increase of nine hundred and twenty-six thousand over what we're collecting in two thousand and twenty-four. So that's actually the amount that's going to be transferred from other funds to the general fund for internal services that the general fund is, is providing to these funds. So next slide, please, yeah. So the cost allocation plan is a rate plan for billing the cost of internal services out, divided by the general fund. I think I just said that. Services are generally considered standard. Now, these are my categories. Just to kind of wrap your mind around it a little, like HR and accounting, the standard stuff you would allocate out. Some non-standard, Board of County Commissioners, assessor. You know, a lot of entities do it, but a lot of entities don't too. All right, I would assume some. And then the need to justify, which are a little bit more unusual, unique, would be like planning and emergency services. So there's a whole smorgasbord, so to speak, of, of activities that are allocated out and billed to other funds because of the services that these activities are, are providing other funds. Service costs are billed to service users at the discretion and direction of the Board of County Commissioners. And this really is your plan. You really have the options of determining what will be billed and what will not. So that thing that Robin was mentioning about where it has to be equitable, that's what we come up with. So when we allocate a number out, we're saying that's equitable and reasonable, like the bill to roads is like a couple of million dollars this year alone. And, and so we're saying that's actually the cost of the services provided by the general fund to fund eleven ninety. They actually owe that to you for, for what we've done for them. So, so that's actually a, and, and you can then make a decision on whether you're going to bill that or not. So a little background, we have a couple of new commissioners and a new CIO. So this cost plan's been around for about thirty-five years. Initially, it was done by a consultant, then it was taken in-house in the nineteen nineties. And back then, it was just a partial plan. It was just some cost centers were allocated out and just some funds were built. And I remember Commissioner Obrequell always saying, we can raise property tax rate six percent. So there's no reason to bill this other stuff out, Board of County Commissioners, the assessor's office, because we can always raise rates to fund these services. So that's, that's way back then. And then the one percent initiative was passed, I think sometime in the nineteen nineties. And then the recession hit in two thousand and eight or nine back then. And that's when the general fund ran out of money. And at that time, we made a decision rounding up two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve to go to a full cost plan. That's where every cost center is billed out, where internal services are being provided by the general fund. And we're going to build all funds, every one of them. So, so because the general fund is out of money. So, so that's, and ever since then, we build the full cost plan every year. So that's kind of takes us to today. Yeah, like I said, external, all, all costs are billed, let's see, all funds are, are billed except for external services. Okay, we don't allocate out the share of, it's not an internal service. General fund departments are not billed because this entire plan is funded out of the general fund. HR, financial services were all paid out of the general fund. So it really wouldn't make any sense in billing the general fund because it would just be an internal billing that would have no financial impact or effect. And outside agencies are not billed unless authorized by, by statute or, you know, local agreement. We have a couple of small ones that we built, the auditor's office. So service costs are assigned by, to users by activity drivers. And, and they have, of course, they have to be billed equitably. Costs are billed on a two-year lag. So for two thousand and twenty-five, it's based on two thousand and twenty-three and we're computing that in two thousand and twenty-four, current year year. And users have the option of requesting a general fund subsidy if they can't pay what is being billed to them, to the cost plan. That's generally not how it's worked. It's kind of, I, I think that might have happened a time or two. But I think generally, I get an email from, from Robin where it says, the board's decided to exclude this fund or whatever. And, and, and as a result, that, that fund then is kind of dropped out and the reason noted in the, in the board resolution, when it's, when it's approved by, by the board. So, yeah. So next slide, please, yeah. User funds are sent detailed statements. The reasons for any changes are noted in the statement. User, of course, has the right to question and request explanations. There's no current disputable issues. One thing about this is, this is really kind of the, from my standpoint, the key control mechanism to the plan. Because, you know, when these bills are sent out, it's for, it's just not for risk management, it's not for, you know, IT. It's for a whole series of things. It's for the board, it's for financial services. It's for, you know, a whole smorgasbord. So, and you, you know, when costs go up, what are we paying for? So these, these statements are, you know, they list cost centers, they list the activity by cost center. They list the allocation method, they list the amount from the current and prior year. If there's any significant changes, they're explained on these statements. So we have to justify what those amounts are and always be prepared to, to explain why the amounts are being billed to them, the rationale behind it. And also computationally, how that number was, was derived. So it's, you know, been done for a number of years and we don't, at this point, get a lot of, lot of questions, disputed issues. We've had some changes for Public Works for roads and, and we've addressed some things, I think, for public health. But it's kind of been few and far between, luckily, so. Yeah, so the following summarized draft full cost plan, like you said, is identical to all prior cost plans since two thousand and eleven. And we are asking for tentative BOCC approval or alternatively, any, any directives or desired changes by the, by the BOCC. From my standpoint, I think it's a pretty, pretty simple decision. I mean, it's just what we've been doing every year since then. And, and to the extent that it's, it's not billed out, then the cost is kind of eaten in the general fund. And where, what that impacts is primarily law and justice, since most of the costs that are spent out of the general fund are for law and justice. So that's, that's it. We can look at the two tables. This one has it by cost center. And let's go to the last one, the table, and then we'll come back to this one. You know, that one. So, because it explains something right here. So, and then we need to see the bottom line. If you can, I can't see the bottom line on there, because they're a total. Maybe that's just my, my screen.
Yeah, we're seeing the, we're seeing the bottom line, so if you want to just reference.
Good, good. Can't see it on my screen. I got this thing up here down at the bottom. Okay, well, good. So I just wanted to point this out. So under two thousand and twenty-five, the amount being billed is whatever it says, eight point seven million. Oh, there. Oh, there, thank you. I just had to move my cursor. Now I can read it. So the bottom line is, yeah, so that's the amount on the, one of the first tables there. That's what we're billing in two thousand and twenty-five. In two thousand and twenty-four, it was seven and a half, so it's nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar increase, which is a fairly sizable increase. And we'll explain more of that in the prior table. But it's, it's unusual. We, I mean, that's percentage-wise, doesn't that come, it said excessive ten percent. So I don't expect that level of increase.
I did the math.
Next year. But, yeah, so now, interesting thing is the plan's actually twenty-four million, twenty-four and a half. And under there, you can see where most of that, the difference between the eight and a half, eight million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand and the twenty-four million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, it's to the general and agency funds. So since this is not an internal service fund, where we bill everything out and where we have to fund everything through a separate fund, it's, it's a cost plan where we're simply reimbursing the, getting reimbursements for, for funds outside the general fund that we've provided these services to. So you can see the amount that's been allocated under the plan to funds we can bill is that fifteen point two million. The twenty-three thousand are those couple of little agent, outside agency funds that have direct contracts with the, with the county auditor. So, yeah, so that kind of, you kind of see there, I have it by department kind of rolled up. Public Works actually includes solid waste and stormwater, the water sewer programs, but they're kind of broken out there. It's not a perfect categorization, but it gives you kind of a nice, I think, a nice overview of what the plan is and what we're billing, will be billing for in two thousand and twenty-five. And then the prior table, you want to go back there? Thank you. So this is by, by cost center. And this will, so that increase of nine hundred and twenty-six, it was primarily due to planning and emergency services that we allocate out the unreimbursed net cost. And so there were fairly substantial increases for planning at three hundred and fifty-one thousand, to the far right for planning. And so the emergency services, yeah, a hundred and seven. And then there were some departmental increases, commissioners was a hundred and nineteen. Financial services was fairly substantial, but the, a lot of that is COVID. A lot of our, our costs were billed out in two thousand, are being billed out in two thousand, were, were excluded from the cost plan because they were paid directly through either COVID or, I think by COVID. So they were just excluded from the plan. Now they're all in the cost pool, so. So that's kind of the explanation for the difference, for the increase in costs this year. So that's, that's pretty much it. And any questions or comments? So, I was kind of, last year, we got a lot of detailed questions. So I know, it was pretty clear, some of the current, the commissioners back then were really getting, they had this review every year. And they're starting to really wrap their minds around it. So I think they're really starting to understand it. After all, like you said, it's their plan, so I think it's pretty important they do understand it. But, yeah, are there any questions, comments, considerations?
County manager.
Thank you. Only comment I have is twelve percent is a significant increase year over year. And so, you know, that, that's what's being presented, but I think this is an area commissioners that we kind of got in deep into the, the development. And I'm trying to, I'm looking through your PowerPoint and I think it's embedded in, on the slide that says plan development. The first bullet says, "Service costs are assigned to users by activity drivers." And I'm wondering if you could talk more about that because I think that was where we got into kind of the deep conversation a year or two ago.
Exactly.
And I was able to understand it better than I had previously, so let's remind everybody kind of how that, what, what's embedded in that bullet point.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, before we get into that though, uh, so, uh, Robin is kind of the expert. She's retiring. So what I recommend maybe the board consider is kind of a liaison. So if you have questions internally on the cost plan, kind of, uh, uh, your own internal, somewhat of an expert, to the extent they don't have the answers, they can, uh, uh, you know, ask us and get the answers they want. But, uh, for the, for the, uh, those drivers, uh, it all varies. Uh, HR is pretty simple. It's all FTE for, uh, that's the driver. I mean, if, uh, uh, for, uh, to the extent that you have more FTEs in the fund, uh, over time, uh, maybe not this year and maybe not next year, but over a long, over a, you know, ten years, uh, you know, most of, a significant portion of the effort is gonna be, by HR, is gonna be provided to funds with more FTEs than the smaller funds, just based, uh, on what they do. Uh, but there, there's a whole variety of prosecuting attorney is direct. They do it by hour. Um, so, and, uh, yeah, by funds. Uh, so it's, they would assume all the attorneys over there have some kind of process of tracking where they're spending their time and, uh, and, and then, uh, at the end of the year, that's all kind of compiled, uh, in a real handy spreadsheet and, and that's, uh, so it's direct for prosecuting attorneys. For financial services, it's, uh, primarily transaction-driven. Um, there is, uh, we, we use, uh, adjusted expenditures, adjusted budget, uh, accounts payable invoices, general ledger, general ledger, uh, items, uh, cash receipt transactions, that kind of stuff. So a lot of ours is, uh, is, uh, for financial services is transaction-based. So it all kind of varies. And the cost plan, by the way, uh, you, which is online, you can actually look at that and you can go to any cost center and you can determine if it's in the federal or the county plan or both. And you can then look at every activity and, and determine whether, uh, determine how it's allocated out. It'll specify in the cost plan how each of those, um, uh, activities are allocated out and computed, uh, in, in the cost.
So, yeah, it was just, so like if you're public health department, you're gonna pay for HR based on how many FTEs you have? It's just kind of flat? If you're...
Yes.
Then if you, then if public health needs advice from the prosecuting attorney, they'll get an hourly...
Yes, exactly.
I think. And then, so, I mean, it's like, each kind of service is sort of differently, like, priced.
Allocated.
And as, and it, if I remember correctly, there is some flexibility in how you do that as long as it's equitable, reasonable, like...
Exactly.
It's not prescribed by law. Like, we, we have a little latitude or, or you guys have a little latitude to figure that out, but it just has to meet that test.
Industry standard.
Yeah.
Exactly. And that, and that's true of all the internal services. And, and there are industry standards or best practices in how to allocate. And if you look at the state auditor, um, audit from a number of years ago where they, uh, did an audit of internal service rates, uh, they published a list of best practices on how to allocate costs for these various types of costs. We use those. Um, part of the direction is it needs to have a nexus to the service. You wouldn't necessarily bill out janitorial services on the number of computers someone has. Uh, square footage makes sense. Um, so there needs to be a nexus to the service and you have to be able to show that the, um, cost was billed out in an equitable fashion. Um, and you should be able to show that, um, the cost of collecting the data that becomes the denominator, um, is reasonable. You don't want to get into such detail that it costs you more to collect the data to allocate than the allocation is worth. So you look for this balance of what's a fair way to allocate but is not burdensome to owners to collect.
So what is it like, so then, so let's say you've figured all that out, you know exactly what the amount is it needs to be. But let's, let me use my public health example. Like, public health has like seven different funds or twelve, I don't know what it is, but multiple funds. So how do you figure out who, which fund has to pay that amount? Because I, I imagine some things apply to the whole department and some things apply to one sub-fund. I mean, does that get really technical in terms of where to pull the money back from to put back to the general fund?
It, it can be, I mean, it can become extremely technical. Any mathematical problem can become technical and you try to keep it as simple as possible. Um, but, uh, we know how many FTEs are allocated to each of the various funds. So if it's cost-driven by FTEs, it's not hard to compute. If, um, we know what square footage any given, um, uh, program occupies in our buildings. So for example, environmental health, uh, we know what square footage they occupy in this building. Um, so all the costs associated with square footage. We also know that environmental health is paid out of a specific fund, the environmental health fund. So all the costs that are allocated to them go to that fund. Um, and it can become complicated, but really you can boil it down to something that's fairly simple. Um, and it does, it, and maybe it's simple because I've been doing this type of work for so long, but you, again, you try to strike a balance so that it's not so burdensome, that it's not worth doing.
So like FTEs, we could use a variety of other factors, like, uh, you know, forms submitted and that kind of thing, but the cost has to be reasonable. And since you're doing this every year, I mean, it's gonna average out in the long term anyway, where, where it should approximate what, uh, what the actual, uh, appropriate cost is over time.
Yeah.
And that thing about all, all the allocation factors, it, it gets a little confusing. I mean, when you have multiple funds in a department, where do the FTEs go? And we have to check that to make sure that the, uh, that we're putting the FTEs in the correct fund, because if you get that mixed up, all of a sudden there's a big change and, and the, we're sending the bill and all of a sudden you got this big increase just because you changed, uh, where you're billing the FTEs to for that department. So, yeah, that, that has to be, all, it has to be laid out and checked every year to make sure we're doing that, um, uh, in the same way we did it in the prior year.
Right, right.
My, my perspective would be that, you know, there's the, the mechanics of the finance, how this is financed in the backend. Then there's the service component, what's delivered to departments. And I think that's an opportunity that with assist, uh, you know, our assistant county managers, we can start looking at because that's really the, the outworking of what services are we, are we providing centrally? What does that get us? How much does that cost? And how much of a burden does that become on departments and how does that raise our overall operating expenses? And then do departments then, if they don't get it centrally, do they go and hire their own staff to do that work for them? And so they're paying for it through salaries and benefits, which raise their operating costs anyways. So there's a real tension. The equation in how it works out is how you pay for it, but the service delivery model and the approach, I think, is something that, um, you know, as we get further into things, um, I wouldn't put it on the, on the top-tier shelf of issues, but I would say it's probably second-tier shelf because I do know that there's some internal organizational tension on that that just needs to be looked at.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, good point. The, uh, the one thing though is, is that's your job, not mine. When, when I do the plan, I don't get into, uh, any questions about whether it's reasonable because, you know, like HR, you know, what is spent out of HR is up to the board and, and HR. I just, what we're at financial services required to do is come up with an equitable process to, to appropriately and rationally build the cost of those services out.
Appreciate your work doing that.
As we wrap up, I would just like to thank all of the service or internal service providers, um, especially this year. Um, all of the providers did what we called a, uh, internal rate roadshow. We used to do a rate day where everybody would come and during the afternoon, um, each provider would present as they presented to you. This year, they approached it a little differently, um, and the team went to each office and department and reviewed their specific rates with them. So that was, um, a bit time-consuming, but I think very worthwhile and I really appreciate, uh, the effort that everyone put into that. So thank you for that and for all of the work you do to support the county.
I agree.
Thank you.